First meeting last week, I'm on this, it's the State Standards Board for teachers. And there's other teachers there and also other people from the Commissioner's Office, et cetera. And I will say, listening to them, we're doing as well as anyone is doing. And no one's going to argue that what we're doing is perfect, or this is what we all want. But listening to some of the other situations in the state, there's a lot, a lot of places that are struggling a lot more. So I think we are, and, and we're trying to listen, and we can't always do whatever one asks us to do. But I'll, I'll be quiet because I could talk about that forever. But thank you, and thank you for the, the positive comments from the other board members, too.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to move, is that it for board communications? Okay, continuing, um, next is a communication from administration, Mr. Canelon.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Carmody, we have three items this evening, the first two are going to be from Mr. Madancy and then from Mrs. D'Nello.
Thank you.
Oh, there he is.
Yep, so I'm pleased to report that we were able to finish out the project over at Kennedy Middle School for the redundant fiber line over the holiday break. And interestingly enough, you know, we had some issues with C E N, that which is the fiber provider for the main line going into the high school. Earlier this week, and our redundant line kicked in and kept the network on. And it wasn't a planned failure, it was a failure, and it worked. So, you know, you all realize the impact that that would have had. There, there was intermittent connectivity issues, so there's certainly, it's not flawless, we're still ironing out some of the inbound policies for that line. But all in all, it was a success and allowed us to stay up and open for business, especially the teachers trying to teach to remote audiences, as well as students that are in person in their classrooms.
That's great.
Secondly, the Chromebooks are, we had 400 of them delivered on Tuesday, we have 700 arriving here to the municipal center tomorrow morning. And then we have a couple thousand get going to the high school midweek next week. So our technology staff, I'd like to really give a huge shout out to Gail Rossi and Jessica Poone. They've done a tremendous job developing a process that essentially makes it seamless for us to deploy the devices as much as we are putting a label for each student on their device, scanning that label, and then also scanning the asset tag on the device and serial code. So that it matches the student that it's assigned to, and it allows us to keep an accurate inventory. We got what device. Our early, the nice part about this, the way this delivery came in was it allowed us to, to do a beta test with the four hundred devices. And during my technology department meeting this morning, the middle school tech analyst who's handling deployment there said it, it was, he was a little stressed about it, knowing they were coming. And he couldn't be more pleased with how seamless and easy it's been with the process that, that they came up with. So big shout out to my technology team, because over the next two weeks, they will be working extensively, as you can imagine, on matching up who has devices already versus who needs devices. And so more information on that at our next meeting.
Thank you, we're, I, I, we are so thrilled that the Chromebooks are in, and we can go fully remote if we have to, thank you, Steve.
I will say, one technology analyst, at the end of each meeting, we do share outs and shout outs, basically either informational sharing out, or just a positive way to end meetings for people between one another. And one of our tech analysts said, I'd like to give a shout out to whoever decided to provide the white glove service, it has made our job
Oh, God.
tremendously easier, and I did say to them, it's your board. They're the ones that voted last meeting that, that they felt that that was the most efficient way to deploy these devices. So the tech team thanks you for that as well, thank you.
The only way to go, all right, Mr. Canelon, you have one more item?
Yes, we'll turn to Mrs. D'Nello for that, thank you.
Thank you, um, good evening, board members, I wanted to provide you a quick update on the coronavirus relief fund grant. You'll recall that we received notification early in the school year that there was going to be some funding to assist in covering the reopening costs associated with COVID. The final dollar amount on that grant was just over eight hundred and fifty six thousand dollars. And we were able to write the grant to cover a number of our expenses, and we plan to utilize every dollar of the eight hundred and fifty six thousand. It's broken out to cover salaries of just under three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of salaries for the additional custodial time, nurses that we needed, additional teachers for the social distancing classes, care support for social distancing and arrival, and the additional lunch waves, food service staff extra hours, again, for those additional lunch waves, and some special education costs that we incurred over the summer. In addition, it covered the bus cleaning cost through the fall, some contracted custodial cleaning and ventilation upgrades at all three schools. We were able to move forward with that at Oceana, South End, and the Agricultural Science Building. And then close to four hundred thousand dollars is going towards the supplies that we needed to safely reopen school, the wipes, the just the list of Jennifer Mallett's office that became a temporary storage unit as we got gloves and masks and everything you can imagine COVID related to keep our buildings clean and try to keep our staff and students in the buildings. So we're really, we're happy, it was a lot of work with the grant, Jennifer Mallett was certainly a huge assistance in coordinating all of those efforts with the orders. But we will file for our final reimbursement next month for that, those funds. And then just a quick update, many of you might have been hearing about another round of funding for the elementary secondary school emergency relief fund. That ESER Round Two is what they're calling it, we don't have a lot of information yet. But we do know that the State Department of Ed was notified last week that Connecticut is going to be receiving another four hundred and ninety two million dollars. And they're able to hold ten percent of that back at the state level, and we are anticipating more information, they're saying potentially tomorrow in regards to what the district allocations will be, how you will be able to use it, and all of that good stuff. So we're anxiously awaiting more information on what those ESER funds can be used for.
Great.
You'll recall, we used a hundred percent of the first installment to purchase the one-to-one devices.
Well, Sherry, that's wonderful, and what an excellent job our school system has done during this pandemic. Keeping our students safe, our staff as safe as we can. I think we should be just very proud of everything that's going on in our school system during this very difficult time. I just, I thank everyone, I thank everyone, thank you. Mr. Canelon, anything else from administration?
No, that's it, Mrs. Carmody, thank you.
Okay, um, any questions from board members on that administration? All right, next I'll go to our student reps.
Hi, everyone, I hope everyone's doing, having a good night, Happy New Year to start off, we haven't seen you since December.
Thank you.
Um, our first item on the list is that our National Honor Society at the high school hosted a live video today on Instagram where they had around sixty people had around sixty students show up to ask, or to get information about application requirements or anything, any just related. The second thing that I have for you is that January twenty eighth is the official last day of the quarter, and also the first, it's also the last day of the first semester. Um, it's going to be asynchronous learning day, so it gives students a last minute chance to hand stuff in or connect with their teachers.
Um, S H S had a virtual course fair via YouTube, five P M. today. So students can learn about the different courses being offered and make their selections for the next school year. And I'm also happy to announce that I will be working on a student-led podcast at S H S with Ms. Ricchio, Ms. Stevens, and University of New Haven's Professor Wayne Edwards. As inspired by the university's Welcome Project, this podcast will be focusing on impactful student conversations, on firsthand experiences involving diversity, identity, social acceptance, and more. Professor Edwards will assist in producing this project, and we plan to launch our first podcast before March.
Oh, that's great, congratulations, wonderful.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Great.
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, we got, got a couple more things, I hope he's doing good, like I'm said, we haven't seen you guys since the new year, it's good to see all of you, everyone's doing well and healthy. So, uh, most importantly, Wednesday's been half days, been super beneficial across the board, a lot of my friends, my sister, we, they too, been super, super helpful. There's been more time to work and get caught up in work that I've get, that I get behind on, especially in my senior caps project. Even to ask teachers for help, especially like in some of my classes that are more challenging, since it's virtual, I can go after school and I can stick around and talk to teacher and say, hey, Mr. O, I don't understand, like, this physics class. And it also gives us students a break from technology if needed, I mean, looking, like, we've said this before, looking at like a screen for six hours a day, if just, if you're doing all eight periods, and if even if you have homework after that, it can, it can hurt the eyes if, let's say you don't have like blue light glasses. And hopefully, we see like a more positive impact, meaning that like, maybe grades go up a little more for some students who are struggling, especially they go after and they talk with their teachers. So a couple more things, Class Link is being rolled out tomorrow, I personally don't know a lot about it, but what I've been told is that it will become the new homepage for students using Chrome, it's a single non, a single sign-on solution, help manage all of the applications our students are using. And for this homepage to work, us, the students, will need to be on a S P S issued device or logged into Chrome browser via our Southern Public School account. And lastly, regarding sports, the C I A C winter season starts January nineteenth, and unless determined otherwise, like a last minute conference. And the sports will be, that will be starting are swimming, basketball, ice hockey, gymnastics, and indoor track. And games competitions and meets and or meets will begin no earlier than February eighth, so that's all, thank you.
I, I'm so glad that the half days that you kids are finding, that the administration that did that for the high school, middle school, where the kids are finding that very useful to go and spend extra time with their teachers and get quiet. I, 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 I hope you, all three of you feel that way, right, that it's been very, very helpful, that's wonderful. Thank you for sharing that, because that was really great of the administration to come up with that, I think it was Mr. Madancy that did, and I don't want to give him too much praise, but I, was it you, Steve?
It was the teachers at the schools.
Was it?
They needed more time to be able to connect with their students, and so they brought that to the administration, and the administration was just smart enough to listen.
Okay, great, they were smart enough to listen, thank you, Steve, thank you, kids, thank you for a great report. Moving on, we have the personnel report. Before we get a motion, I was quite surprised to see all of the retirement on that, kind of upset me, but I'm fine at the times, I guess, may I have a motion on the personnel report?
Yeah, move to approve the personnel report that's submitted.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can we tell them they can't retire?
Well, I think we can do that.
Wealth of knowledge that's, that we are losing as a district.
There's a lot of people we know on that.
I don't think they'll call me, but.
A wealth of, of knowledge and just.
Oh, I know, I know.
You know, we should have had this discussion before we voted, because we all voted no.
Yeah, you know what, you're right. You're right, Dave, my fault, I apologize.
Motion to reconsider?
All right, moving on, old business, town government communications, I don't think that we have anything to, and we already kind of had, or do you, I'm sorry, your hand is up.
We just, yes, through Mr. D'Nello's office, a listing of all the meetings that are coming up under the Board of Finance and the hearings and everything was sent to all board members.
Right.
And the, the next one, I believe, where we will be asked, Board and Administration to present the Board of Education budget to the Board of Finance on February tenth.
Right.
So that's the next one that's coming up, beyond that, and I, I believe there will be another Board of Education meeting prior to the next time we get together with the Board of Education, of the Board of Finance, rather. But it's probably worth noting more than one time that the Board of Finance's public hearing on the budget will be March first at seven o'clock.
And those are our virtual meetings, correct, Mr. Canelon?
They said they were at DePaulo, the one March first was at DePaulo, and the other ones were at Jopolo.
Oh, it is, so it's, it's at DePaulo, okay.
I'm going to defer to Mrs. D'Nello, because I know she's had some conversations about this, Sherry.
I can tell you that they did post locations for all of the meetings, however, at this time, they are all planned to be virtual. And as we get the information on how to access those links, we'll be pushing them out to you. And if something changes and they go in person, we'll certainly let you know that, too. So just know that if they do go in person, they have the locations planned, but as of this point in time, any meetings are taking place.
Okay, Sherry, thank you, Sherry. Next on our agenda is our school calendar, our second reading.
Moves, I'd like to make a movement, moves that the Board of Education adopts the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school calendar as recommended by the administration.
Second. Any discussion, Bob?
Yeah, um, I know we've received emails about this idea of snow days going remote, and I want to just be sure, I understand, there's nothing on the calendar about that, is there? No.
No, no, that's not, that's, that's really not a calendar issue.
That's why I was wondering, because we got emails talking about that, and.
People were, were mixing the two, what we, what we will be doing very shortly is sending out a communication to both staff and to families and asking for some input on that, because we do know folks have feelings, and there were some, there were some good ideas that were, that were offered to us. So I, I think it's important for us to listen to our families, listen to our staff members.
Good.
You know, what, our intent is, is to strike a balance, quite frankly.
Yeah.
You know, the first snow day we had this year was, was beautiful, right, it was gorgeous snow, well, you know very well, located where we are, we're going to have those days when children are not going to be out playing in the snow, because it's going to be sleeting, icy, an icy mess. So perhaps those are the days that we do remote, remote learning days. But the goal is to get some input, try to find a reasonable way to strike a balance and retain some flexibility so that we can make those adjustments as they come up, that's.
Thank you.
In theory, that's what we're trying to do, right?
Okay, so we had a motion and a second, do I have any other discussion on the calendar? All those in favors, calendar as presented?
Aye.
Any objections? Motion carries, calendar stands, thank you. Next, we have Mrs. Clark, I believe, on, well, you're up for.
Yeah, yep. Colleen. Um, I'd like to make a motion to move to approve policy thirteen sixteen, relations between public and school personnel as recommended by the Policy and Personnel Committee.
Second.
Although, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, Mrs. Clark?
Okay, yes, ma'am, move to approve policy four one one eight dot one one, non-discrimination personnel as recommended by the Policy and Personnel Committee.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections, motion carries, Mrs. Clark?
Okay, for whatever reason, okay, here we go. Move to approve policy five one three zero, bully, bullying prevention and intervention as recommended by the Policy and Personnel Committee.
Second.
Oh, sorry, Dave.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion care, any objections? No, motion carries, Colleen?
Okay, move to approve policy five one four one dot six, the wellness policy as recommended by the Policy and Personnel Committee. Second.
Did I hear a second?
Yeah, Missy.
Any questions? All of, Joe?
So nice, why, why can't we, all of our policies, the wellness policy, why, why can't we?
We're going to have the kindness policy, Joe.
We're going to have the kindness one coming up, Joe.
Oh, boy, here we go.
I'm just telling you, Joe. So we had a, we had a, we had a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Colleen, I think you have one more, is that it?
Yes, I do, move to approve policy five one five zero, non-discrimination students as recommended by the Policy and Personnel Committee.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Motion carries, thank you, Mrs. Clark.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Brown up.
Yeah, I move to approve the S H S textbook adoption, Miller and Levine Biology as recommended by, now that the agenda's wrong, actually, it's the Curriculum and Instruction Committee, not the.
Right.
Policy, which.
Doesn't make any difference.
No.
Okay, so, do I have a second on that motion?
Isaiah, seconded.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Motion carries. Under new business, we have the unaffiliated compensation, Mr. Canelon, did you want to handle that? Or no?
He can't make a motion.
He can't make a motion.
Motion to approve, right?
Move to approve compensation for unaffiliated staff for the twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two school year as proposed by the administration.
Okay, a second, okay, a second, who was second in that?
All eight of us.
Yeah, we all did.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries, thank you. And now we have the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two post-operating budget presentation, and I will turn that over to Mr. Canelon and Mr. Madancy.
Thank you, Mrs. Carmody.
You're welcome.
So if you give us a minute, Mr. Madancy is going to share his screen with us and put up the slides, very good, Mr. Madancy. So just bear with me for one minute, we'll, we'll go through these. As we do each year, or as we have done each year, this is an overview, I know that we'll be having more in-depth discussion next Tuesday and next Thursday at the, at the workshop, so, and I also know that you've had your board books for a while. So this is really designed to be an overview and hit all the highlights, or at least the most salient points of the budget. So, good evening, this presentation will begin in much the same way as the presentation last year. Although, at this time last year, we truly had no idea what the coming months would bring in terms of challenges. Now more than ever, it's imperative that we marshal our resources and provide what we know is necessary to meet the needs of our students, and what we hope is a mostly post-COVID school year. It's always helpful to begin at the beginning in terms of the rights of students regarding their education. Although this information is included in the Superintendent's Budget Memorandum to the Board, it is important to be included in this public session for members of the community, including other elected officials, as a reminder of our responsibility to meet the educational needs of the youth of our community. The Constitution of the State of Connecticut guarantees a free public education to all students, grade kindergarten through grade twelve. The Connecticut General Assembly delegated the responsibility to provide the constitutionally guaranteed public education to local communities and charged the State Board of Education with oversight, authority, and responsibility. Local boards of education in Connecticut have a dual responsibility to their local community, but also to the state in discharging the state's responsibility to provide public education. In Connecticut, it is a statutory obligation of the local Board of Education, hence the Superintendent, to submit a budget for consideration that is designed to meet the needs of the school district. In Southington, as in many school districts across the state, needs will always outweigh the ability of the community to provide the necessary fiscal resources. The proposed Superintendent's Budget for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, wow, that's very difficult to say, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year provides a reasonable balance to the legal, moral, and ethical responsibility of supporting the educational needs of our community, while acknowledging the fact that fiscal resources are limited. The proposed budget has the following characteristics at its core. It is thoughtful and deliberate, it maintains and supports the most effective services, it supports implementation of innovative strategies to support instruction. District needs are addressed in a continuous and incremental fashion. The budget represents substantial value for the community's investment in education, school funds are used in an effective and an efficient manner. The budget will provide the type and quality of learning experiences that families and community members have grown to expect. The budget will continue to provide a sound school district, which is necessary for the overall economic well-being of the community. So if we can go to the next slide. And you can see, as we typically do, we have our Board of Education, we have our central office administration identified. The next slide, Mr. Madancy, please, our high school and middle school administration, the next slide, please. All of our elementary administrators and our district-level coordinators, and the next slide, Mr. Madancy. And then the next one, okay, to get to the core of it, the net increase proposed equals a little over three point three million dollars and is a three point three percent increase. Next slide, Mr. Madancy. So if we break down regular education, special education, and major projects, it's important to note, the regular education increase is two point one one percent. The special education increase is four point two six percent, you can see the dollar amounts there, I will not read those to you. Major projects and equipment was essentially reduced to zero in the current budget, the proposed amount represents needs that are continuing to accrue that have not been met, and there, you can see the dollar amount, it's about six hundred thousand dollars. If we go to the next slide, please. So the portions of the budget are very different, and you can see, or at least this slide outlines that approximately seventy two percent of the overall budget is devoted to general education or regular education, and approximately twenty seven percent of the budget is devoted to special education, which we know is an absolutely necessary but expensive resource. Our total major projects and equipment, which we, we can't forget about, is just under seven tenths of one percent of this budget. So, Mr. Madancy, the next slide, please. And the major components. What I want you to do is note, of course, first off, that these three components account for ninety five point seven eight percent, so almost ninety six percent of our budget is tied up in salaries, benefits, and purchase services. Salaries, as in the vast majority of school district budgets, is a little over sixty two percent. Benefits, which include healthcare benefits, is almost nineteen percent of the budget. And then, as you can see, purchase services, fourteen point six two percent of the budget. The purchase services, I said, we really can't forget about that, that's about fifteen thousand dollars. And you can see the purchase services detail on pages twenty one through twenty four in your budget book, so that's a, that's a significant amount that we, we often neglect to talk about, but yet that's a, that's a significant portion of the budget. If we can go to the next one, Mr. Madancy, please. So slide ten, this is a, a complete breakdown in a, in a graphic, a pie chart, that just gives a visual perspective, if you will, on the portions of the budget and the, the amount of each that is, that encompasses the budget. So you can see salaries, benefits, and purchase services, there is a different chart, which is essentially the same on just past page two in the budget book, and then you can see each of these other areas. I mean, for example, equipment is seven one hundredths of one percent. Salaries and new personnel, which we'll talk about in a minute, is about thirty two one hundredths of one percent. Supplies and materials is two point four eight percent, so all those figures are, are in your budget book, but that's how the budget is comprised, and you can see the, the largest pieces there. We can go to slide eleven, Mr. Madancy. The next slide, Mr. Madancy, please. Thank you. So the components of the budget increase, we've got four categories that account for three point one eight percent of the three point three percent request. Salaries of existing personnel, as you can see there, the, the top line, that's fifty three, a little over fifty three percent of the increase is for existing salaries. New personnel is about ten percent of the increase. Purchase services, it's approximately fourteen percent of the increase, and major projects and equipment is approximately eighteen, it's almost nineteen percent of the increase, and again, all of those are deeper in your, deeper in your budget book, we won't look at those specifically right now. But those are the four biggest pieces of the increase. Now, when we look at regular education in new personnel, that total is about eighty five thousand dollars, and we'll, we'll talk about that in a minute, and you can see special education's about two hundred and, almost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the next one, Steve, thanks. So in the, in the regular education line, we've got in two areas of nursing. The first is to add point two and point two to the L P N positions at each of the middle schools, which would bring us to two point oh at each of those schools, so that's something that we've, we've needed for a while in terms of the additional nursing staffing, and this is, this would allow us to get to that point. And then the next one is what we. And then the next one is what we've called a permanent substitute registered nurse. We tried to do without this position when we had to make some cuts. I want to say that was two years ago, two budget cycles ago. And what we're finding is it's really not possible. We really need to have the coverage that we know will exist. It's very, very difficult to find some these days. So that position would allow us to do that and make sure that we had adequate coverage for all of our schools. And in addition to that, in general education, we've added some hours in two areas that one is technology assistants, who do a lot of the break-fix work. They do an awful lot of the right now, looking at the devices coming back in, cleaning them, putting them back into operating condition, et cetera. That's a good chunk of their work. And as you know, we have many more devices on hand now. What we would like to do is expand some of those hours so that we have more people, more time for people to be available at school buildings. And then there's some district clerk hours that we wanted to expand, and that's going to assist technology. But it's also going to provide some services for our second location where our preschool classrooms are. And that's at Strong Elementary School. Okay, Mr. Medansi. Special education is a little bit more in-depth or a little more complicated. And you can see all of this on pages 48, 49 in the budget book. But essentially, we're looking at three special education teachers in this request. Excuse me. Two of those positions are for in-district programs that are designed to meet the needs of students who have some very specialized needs, significant needs. And that really has to do with enrollment and enrollment projections in the numbers of students that we're going to see in those particular programs. Stellar, we know, is our post-18 program that provides transition services for our students. And we see that population as growing. And then Space is the program that was added during the present school year. And if you recall back to last year's presentation, you know that our population of young students with autism spectrum disorder has grown over the years. And the program was put in place last year, knowing that we're going to have a continuing need. And so that expansion is, again, based on the projection of those numbers. And one position at Southington High School is really based on volume of students and looking at caseloads. When we compare our caseloads across the district, we're much, much higher caseloads at the high school. And this would allow us to really do the appropriate programming for our students with special needs at the high school. And again, all these explanations are in your budget book. I just wanted to highlight this in our presentation, because it does take up a good chunk of our increase. Psychologists, the two psychologist positions, one would allow us to bring services in district. We currently contract out with Wheeler Clinic for services and our collaborative learning program. And if you may recall, a number of years ago, at our team program, we had contracted services. And we brought that in district. We canceled that contract, and we hired our own psychologist. And that's worked out very, very well for us. And we're looking at that same type of situation again. So to bring those services inside, hire the person ourselves, and not have to contract out for those services. And then the second position really would allow us to balance out all of the psychology services across the district. Excuse me. The social work positions, and that will allow the district to address student clinical needs. And we'll be able to increase support at two elementary schools and then provide a clinical component for students at the Karen Smith Academy. We know, really, with both of these positions, both the psychologist and social work positions, that we have mental health needs that have increased over time. And I think this board has done a good job over the time that I've been here in recognizing that. And we have added positions each year, I think more so than ever now. Our needs to support students with mental health needs is really growing. It's a very, that's a very, very significant need for us. The speech-language pathologist position that you see there, which is basically half-time, that's based on service needs, really, when we look at student IEP hours and project that into the next school year. The ABA therapist positions really help support our specialized programming. And so that's, again, a projection of the needs for those students, particularly in the space program, and knowing what those IEP needs are going to look like for the coming school year. So that's, again, that's a little bit more detail than I usually put in the superintendent's presentation. But you can see much more specific information in the budget book on pages 48 and 49 for those areas. Okay, Steve, very, thank you. So we've had this discussion before, but I did want to highlight, because there are some pretty significant requests with regards to special education needs. We are supporting and educating students with complex special needs in district. We know that that's best for our children. And we have created, over the last five and six years, in-district programs and expanded them. And we're expanding again. And those are all based on projecting the needs of students as they move through our grades. We know our programs are high-quality, they're cost-effective. Our people personnel services and special education teams have worked very, very hard, along with our special education teachers, our paraeducators, our ABA therapists, all our related services folks. They're very, very dedicated, and they do a wonderful job meeting the needs of these students. And I think we're fortunate to be able to do this in district. You know, my last point there is that without the in-district programs, many students would require out-of-district programs to meet their needs. I think last year, when we were talking about the expansion and adding the space program, I brought to the board the fact that the cost of running our programs at that time was by $5.3 million, if you would. But yet, it was somewhere in the neighborhood of $3 million that would have cost, there would have been out-of-district costs for us. Or it cost us $3 million. It would have been $5 million to have students out of district. So we looked at a $2.4, $2.5 million savings just in that one year as a result of having the in-district programs ourselves. So that's why those programs are so important. And we know that we're going to have certain numbers of students as they move through the grade levels. And our folks have done a pretty good job of projecting that, hence the, you know, the requests that you see before you in this budget. And we always like to include the glossary of terms. You know, I do kid the special ed folks all the time, because I have absolutely no idea what it takes to come up with the naming of the programs. But I was looking at it in preparation for this, and even though I tease them, if you really look at it, think how much thought is going into what staff believes students are getting out of the programs. Look, just look at Stellar, which is one at the very bottom. Southington Transition and Education in Life Learning Adult Responsibilities. So I make fun of them for the acronym. I tease them about the acronym. But it really does reflect what staff are hoping students get out of the programs. But the glossary, I think, is always helpful. So you can always refer to that, because, you know, educators, we love to talk in acronyms all the time. And when we say LIDS or SPACE or EAS, at least you can refer back to the glossary.
Some of our board members are very grateful for that, Mr. Canelon.
You better learn all of them, Colleen.
So, major projects and equipment. Now, these are just examples. If you can see the full complement of major projects and equipment in the budget book on pages 56 and 57, and they're fairly extensive. Again, we always have needs. And we've been able, not this year, but the previous year, we've been able to knock some projects off of our list. We're very grateful that the Board of Finance and Town Council supported us with the non-laxing account. We were able to do some significant things with that. We've held on any projects using those funds this year, because we were concerned about the COVID-related costs. But nonetheless, if you look in the budget book, you can clearly see the list. These are all things, these are not would-like-to-haves. These are all things that we actually have to do at some point in time. And we hope to be able to get some of these accomplished. And if we're fortunate enough at the end of this school year to still have funds remaining in the current non-laxing account, we'll be able to look at some major projects that we have and be able to knock some of those off the list as we've been able to do in the past. Okay, Steve. So I wanted to include this in here. This is just a five-year history. I mean, Mrs. D'Nello has many more years, but comments were made last year in a different venue. And it was, the comments were with regard to the increases for the Board of Education. And it was to, it was part of a justification to create a budget that didn't result in an increase in taxes. And I understand that. That was desirable. But there was one comment that was made in particular that was completely inaccurate. And I wanted to take the opportunity to include in our budget document some information that would correct that mistake. Because the comment was that, at one point in time, the Board of Education, in the recent past, the Board of Education received a quote 10% increase. Well, this is my seventh year. We have certainly not received a 10% increase. So I wanted to put the last five years in perspective. And I think the problem was really with the going from the 2017-18 to 2018-19, because there was some confusion in there. If you recall, in 2017-18, our former governor proposed a different way to fund education. He was going to pull all of the money out of the education cost-sharing grant dollars, especially for special education, and put it into this grant, which was the $8.3 million grant. Now, both Mrs. D'Nello and I said numerous times, that's never going to happen. And in fact, it never did happen. And it was a struggle all year for us, because the original appropriation that came from the town council was the $87 million appropriation that you see there. So we were able to work successfully, and I was really thankful for Mr. Shoda's partnership to help us get us through that year and the Board of Finance's partnership. And the end results, when we came to the end of the year, the total dollars came to the Board of Education was the $92 million figure. So that year, that 17-18 year was really just under six tenths of 1% increase to the budget. Right? And the previous year had been 2.95. I can't do that from memory, Mr. Medansi. We have to keep. So then, you can see the following year was the 1.72% and then 1923.13. But I wanted to point something out, because you can see we've got that with the three stars. That was the year that Mr. Shoda had to put in, on the town side, dollars for MERS, which is the municipal employees retirement system, because that was becoming a state mandate. And then there was some talk about the teachers' retirement system. So there were dollars that were put in the budget that were credited to the Board of Education side. Now, the TRB funds were never used, and the MERS funds were actually used. And so if you look at it from that perspective, it's really 2.84%, but the MERS dollars, we didn't ask for, the board didn't ask for. It was a state mandate and had to be put in there. Had that not happened, that would have been a 2.46% increase. So nowhere on there is a 10% increase. And when you take a realistic look at it, all these have been pretty reasonable. And we've really been trying to do the very best that we can to meet the needs of our students, if you will. So that was my point in putting that in there. If that discussion comes up again, we have information in the budget document that we can go back to and look at the recent increases to the Board of Education budget and see that they're actually pretty reasonable. Okay, we've included the Malone and McBroom study in here. I think it's important to keep that in front of folks. And Steve, you can just flip to the next one. There's the elementary piece to that. And go right ahead, go to the next one. And the middle school and high school. So this information is all information that you've seen before, but it's historical data. At some point in the not-too-distant future, we will have to have Malone and McBroom update this information for us. It's going to be really important as we move forward in further discussions about the elementary facilities and what to do with our remaining elementary schools. So I thought it was pretty important just to keep it in our budget. And also to point out, we still have these years, 25, 26, and 26, 27 school year in particular for the elementaries. And then if you see the middle school, the 27, 28 school year, when we're going to have some increases in enrollment. So it's just important to continue to have that information in there, which is why we include it. Okay, Mr. Medansi. Well, more so, we always know the reason that we do all this is for our students, right? Southington's vision of a graduate, these are six Cs: citizenship, creativity, critical thinking, communication, collaboration, and of course, content mastery. Those are the things that we are trying to help our students with. Acquire those skills. Learn how to communicate. Learn how to collaborate. And then here's our statement. Graduate of the Southington Public Schools will be college or career-ready and prepared for life beyond by mastering the knowledge and demonstrating the skills to communicate effectively, think creatively and critically, and contribute to the global community. That's why we do what we do. That's what the budget supports. So thank you for your attention. Our administrative leadership team looks forward to discussions regarding the proposed budget during the upcoming Board of Education workshops on Tuesday, January 19, and Thursday, January 21. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canelon. Appreciate the slides, and we have our budget booklets to go over. And next week, it's next week where we have two workshops. And as in the past, we are starting earlier. I think you all saw that. The times were changed to 6 o'clock, I believe. Am I correct? Tim, was it 6? Yes.
6 o'clock, yes.
Okay, till 7:30? You know, to go through your booklets, have your questions, we will do page by page and try to answer any questions that we can that night. And if not, we will forward them, of course, to the administration, and they will get the answers for us for our second workshop or after that. Any other questions tonight?
I have a question. I'm not looking for an answer right now, but maybe it's something that could be supplied next week. You know, as I went through the budget book, and I'm looking at the money for the athletic fields. And I'm wondering if there are, and again, I'm not looking for an answer now. I'm just looking for, maybe next week. Are there ways to waive those? Is there a timeline for when those things have to be done? I know there's Title IX, et cetera, and I'm just, whatever. And could you find out maybe and give us an answer next week? Is there a timeline for when some of the Title IX has to be accomplished? If that makes sense.
Yes, we can have that discussion next week. Happy to do that.
Yeah, thank you.
During our budget workshops, Bob, okay. All right, is that it from everyone?
Terry, I just said one thing. So just kind of like a side note to better understand the slide. So it's a question for Tim. The Malone and McBroom projected numbers, Tim?
Yes.
Are those numbers strictly the projections, or do those get updated with real data numbers? I know, you know, again, you can't predict the future, but you can try and get a good gauge on it. How do those numbers compare with our actual enrollments for the 2020-2021 year? Because, and again, like if any of our town councils are still on, you know, I think it's really important because of the shakeup of what happened this past year. We are seeing a big influx of younger families moving into our town. So I think it's just, it's really important to sort of gauge that, because again, like we may have some unforeseen costs with that. So I just thought it might be a
Is that you, Joe?
That's my dogs.
I thought it was you.
Thanks, Terry. Thank you.
You should have seen my cat take off. We can, Mr. Pacheska, we can absolutely bring that in, bring that information. The short answer is, we look at our enrollment all the time. And in fact, it was just updated yesterday. Our, the mitigating factor, to use that term, this year, of course, are the number of students who are remote. And then the number of students Number of students, we have had a fairly large number of students whose parents have chosen the home instruction route. So those have thrown our numbers off a little bit.
Okay.
So that will be updated, Joe, before we finish. Dave, Darrenowski, your hand up.
Is there any way of getting a copy of the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, we planned on sending that out tomorrow, Mr. Darrenowski. Good question.
Any other board members? All right, Mr. Darrenowski, you have a job to do.
Yeah, move to adjourn.
Second.
Can I pose?